Good evening, folks. Welcome to the August 21st, 2025 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Noah Levy. I am filling in tonight for Chair Ivor Scavdal. Before we get started, just want to let everybody know, as usual, if you are watching this meeting remotely, page three of our agenda says how you can comment by Zoom or by phone. So just take a look at that. If you're remote, I know we may have some folks remotely wanting to comment tonight. And I guess with that, I will invite you, call the meeting order and invite us to begin with a salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
Laura, could we please have a roll call of commissioners present?
Commissioner Scavdal is absent. Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Mulder?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Commissioner West is absent. Commissioner Curiase?
Here.
Commissioner McFarland?
Here. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Director Ford, are there any modifications to the printed agenda?
We have no modifications to the agenda. You will find on the dais, there are two letters that were received for the workshop tonight.
Great. Thank you so much. It's nice to see a bunch of people out there. I see many, if not all of you, are here for the workshop, which we will get to after we review the consent agenda. But before we review the consent agenda, I do want to invite anyone either here in person or on Zoom or phone and who wishes to make a comment on a matter not on our agenda, but that is the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, now would be the time to do that. Is there anybody here in person who wish to comment on something that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, I see no hands in the room. Just want to make sure there's nobody on Zoom. Don't see any hands there. All right, so we will move on then to the consent agenda. Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
Just a question that I think would be to the director about public comment. We receive public comment for an upcoming meeting, and I just, is that available? Say, say if someone was following along, there was comments both on both ways on that, is that available for people to view online as well?
Those will be made available as part of the packet when that item comes over.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Then I'm going to run through the consent agenda, which is actually not terribly long tonight. And as usual, I'll pull the commission and the audience to see if any of these items, if anyone wishes to pull these items for discussion or comment or questions. Let's start with the, first item is the review and approval of the August 7th action summary. Anybody wish to comment on that? Okay, then item one will remain on consent. The second item is the continuance of a conditional use permit modification for ridgefield events in the Arcata area. To be clear, all we're doing tonight is continuing that item to the next meeting, September 4th. Does anybody wish to comment on the continuance? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. Third item is the extension of the Santos final map subdivision. They are seeking a two-year extension to an already approved subdivision. Is anyone wishing to comment or pull that? Yes. Okay, then we will pull item three. Fourth item is an extension of the Mitchell Minor subdivision in the McKinleyville area. Is anybody wishing to pull that one for a discussion or questions? Seeing no hands in the commissioners, anyone in the audience? Okay, so then item four will remain on consent, and that is the last item. So.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, and four on the consent.
I'll second.
Commissioner Curiase. So we have a motion by Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner Curiase, to approve the three items left on consent. I think we could take a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so consent calendar passes unanimously. And now, before we get to the workshop, we will deal with that item that was pulled from consent, which is the Santos subdivision extension. Commissioner Curiase, since you did request this, would you like to have a staff report or would you like to just direct your question upfront to staff?
Yeah, thank you. I did review the 2023 hearing for this project, and so I'm comfortable not having a staff report on this. However, I think a couple of commissioners here may have not been at that meeting, so if they would like that.
I actually spoke with the planner fairly extensively about this, to clarify my question, so I'm okay without a staff report.
Okay. Well, then, in the interest of time, since we have a full house for what comes later, I think we will skip the staff report. However, I do, as we're having, as we're opening the hearing on this item, I do want to allow for public comments, but perhaps first we'll have the question and answer.
I have fewer questions and more comments. So if you want to get to questions from, if you want to, if I, if you want me to start asking or making comments, I'm happy to, otherwise.
Sure. I think that would be, yes, go ahead and make your comments, and we'll see if other commissioners wish to comment, and then we can see if there's any public comment. How about that?
That sounds good. Yeah, I partly apologize for bringing this up. I know every time that you're just asking for an extension, the applicant that says that they're dreading a simple extension being called. But I do want to address the, or have comments about the plans for the roadways, specifically McKinleyville Ave. and Duchess Avenue. And looking at the broader context of McKinleyville and the community plan and the desire to have off-road trails, and wanting to think through a little bit more, particularly in the context also of the BMX park that is being put in, and then I do also think that this relates to the town center because there is an off-road trail connection that is proposed at the off-road, or the town center. And wanting to think through a little bit more what that bike trail connectivity looks like with this development. And right now, the way I see McKinleyville Ave. designed is just your sort of standard two-lane, fairly high-volume throughway. I know McKinleyville will probably see increased volume. I'm assuming it'll pull a lot of traffic off of Washington. And the, the community plan originally did show an off-road trail taking Washington, the path along Washington, so there would be a buffered bike trail that would continue that connectivity up into the town center. And I think with the housing development there, as well as the BMX development, we really didn't see that off-trail, or that off-road trail developed. And personally, I'm seeing what is, what are Class III bike lanes. So essentially, you have a road shoulder, which is a bike lane. And in my opinion, that doesn't really encourage significant bicycling, community use by a wide range of community members. And so I wanted to put out there the potential of creating buffered bike lanes, possibly on McKinleyville Ave., and thinking that through a bit more. And/or noting how the BMX park, basically, that trail, the pathway and trail through the BMX park dumps out into a planned cul-de-sac at the eastern end of Duchess. And I'm assuming that Duchess would be a connectivity of these residents to that BMX park, and thinking through that bicycle connectivity being more improved, actually being bicycle facilities there. And in general, I'm always going to advocate for at least a Class IV buffered bike lane. You'll get the widest range of user types, including youth and kids, versus a Class III simple shoulder bike lane where you're having to ride right up next to cars. And so I guess what I'm, I'm making, I'm putting forth those comments and advocating for rethinking how the right-of-way along McKinleyville and Duchess are used in the context of bike lanes, and advocating for considering a Class IV. And I don't know if that potentially would be putting forth a recommendation for an additional condition, or looking to staff possibly for.
We're discussing that. We're not feeding Legistar right now. We don't have a live feed.
Oh, okay. Well, so I just want to make, is that, is that correctable? Do we?
Feel free to interrupt me, too, in the situations.
What Director Ford said, for anyone online who might not have caught it, is that the, well, if you're, if you're hearing this online, you're probably on Zoom, but normally this is also fed to the Legistar website, and apparently that feed is not coming through on that website. It's just blank?
I'm sorry, it just showed up.
It is? Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
Not at all. I, I was going to invite staff to perhaps respond if you've, if that's, if you've sort of completed your comments, or if you.
Yeah, I have. I guess I have a question. Should I repeat myself, since it wasn't streamed on Legistar? Or should we just go ahead and move on?
I think we can move on.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
I guess the struggle that we're going to have responding to that right now is, to our knowledge, that hasn't been evaluated, the requirement's not there. We really would ask for a continuance and be able to talk to public works and, and look at that and come back, and then determine whether or not that's even a condition we can add to a map renewal.
I think, unfortunately, that would be my request, recognizing that that does delay this extension. But I feel like there's, and I feel like this development plays an important role in the broader development of McKinleyville, in this area of McKinleyville and connectivity to the town center.
Sure. Other commissioners now. I saw Commissioner Mulder and then Commissioner O'Neill.
So, for me, first off, I would, very uncomfortable trying to add conditions to a previously approved project, that this is just a map sub, like, extension. Very, very uncomfortable, especially uncomfortable if the applicant's not even present. My interpretation, if this was me doing this, I probably wouldn't be present because I don't see why it wouldn't just be, for lack of a better term, rubber stamped, because Humboldt County is lacking housing. At least, that's, that's what we're told. And most of the extensions I'm seeing come forward, I believe, are due to construction costs, and it's just, it's hard to build out right now. So I'm really uncomfortable to even delay it and try to add conditions onto a previously approved map or subdivision, just because I don't want to change policy on the dais, because, just thinking off the top of my head, there's five to 10 we've approved in the last six months, I think, of these extensions. So if that was a policy thing that we wanted to look at, I'd be fine of talking about the policy, but I wouldn't want to make it on the dais, and that's, so I'd be ready to move forward as is tonight, but I'm just one of five tonight?
Can I ask really quick to clarify what you mean by policy?
I don't believe, so what I mean by policy is, I don't believe we've ever added conditions to a pre-approved project in the extension request, and I could be wrong, staff could correct me, but just from my memory of the time that I've sat up here, I don't believe that's a policy practice we've done. So that's why I call it policy. Maybe that's not the right term, but that's just the way I see it.
I saw Commissioner O'Neill's hand.
Since it is an extension, I don't think it's going to harm anything if we waited to another meeting and got whatever information you, you needed, or notified the applicant that they should probably participate. I would participate, whether it was an extension or not. So I don't think that's a problem. But I agree that, you know, as we always keep saying, we need more housing, more housing in Humboldt County, and I know Arcata and Eureka work on their own housing, but it seems like McKinleyville is always the place where all the housing is falling. And every time, we're sort of piecemealing in the transportation side of things, the trails, the bike trails, you know, and not all of us live maybe right where that subdivision's going to be, or where the town site plan's going to, you know, be developed. But we still live in McKinleyville, and we still travel on the roads, and I would like to see, this was something I was going to say later, but it fits here, too, is a better plan for transportation, like where we, where we headed with it, not just, okay, well, we're going to add 40 houses here and 70 houses there and 6,000 people over here, and, and I walk those roads in McKinleyville, I've ridden my bike there, walked my dog, almost got ran over two days ago, you know. But there is, I don't see a plan for how we're going to, a master plan, that we can, each time we make an approval, we can say, yeah, this needs to be a Class IV because it fits into the overall master plan for transportation. And I think that if we're going to keep increasing the number of units, whether they're rentals or homes, in that community, that we need to see that happen. You know, we don't have any turnarounds, we just moved to school, you know, from one place to another, no, there's no sidewalks for the kids to walk on because they're all going to walk past my house, I know that, you know, but there's no sidewalks, you know, and more cars are going to be going in a different direction, but there, nobody's, if they are coming up with a plan, they're not sharing it with us. I haven't seen it, you know, but I'm not saying they don't have plans, I just don't know what they are. So I don't know that we can force anybody. I mean, certainly we can't force an individual homeowner to make a master transit plan for McKinleyville, but someone needs to be doing it, and if they need funding to do that, they need to apply for, you know, grant funds to do it.
So I would just say that normally, in a condition like this, it's something we're going to be conditioned, and the applicant may not be here, they have, there's a hand up, but it would be something because there is something that was changed in a policy document. I'm not aware that that has been done. I'm also not aware, just to be honest, we already have the right-of-way. And, and so if what you're talking about is changing the right-of-way to accommodate this, you know, that would be something very different. I don't know what it is, I don't know what the configuration of the road is, I know in other areas where we've looked at bike trails, it has meant putting no parking in front of houses. And, and so there's, there's some things there that just have to be evaluated.
Did you want to respond before I open up public comment?
Yeah, I definitely did, you know, a high-level look at the existing right-of-way and looked at designs from other jurisdictions. That includes parking, includes vehicle paths of travel in both directions, includes a buffer space, includes that bike lane, includes the sidewalk, and, and I think you're within a foot or so of total need. And so I don't think that this is an ask where you would, we'd be looking at increasing the right-of-way.
Oh, yes, Commissioner McFarland?
I just want to ask a logistical question, because I understand both points of view very clearly, like I don't want to impede housing development, something preconditioned, but now the situation in McKinleyville is different than when this permit was issued, and the need for holistic planning. So I understand both, but from the logistics side of it, and maybe this is a question to Director Ford or county staff, if we were to follow with the original request of looking into the feasibility of adding these bike lanes, what timeline, what, how long of a delay do you think that would cause, and is that something that could be done?
Recommend a continuance to September 4th.
Okay, so it would just be one meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I think it's, yes, Commissioner Mulder?
So I don't want to, I don't want to sound argumentative, but I hear you looking at the right-aways and stuff like that, but from survey standpoints and construction setback standpoints, within a foot, if it's not exact, a foot is a big difference. So I just, I just want to make sure we all understand that.
I'd like to say that I, you know, could be persuaded to continue this matter for a couple of weeks, even though I certainly also don't recall any time when we've added new conditions to a project when neither the project nor the relevant regulations had changed. That said, we are, this is, this is in McKinleyville, there, we are going to be talking about something and may very well be reviewing an actual ordinance for the town center, which would have implications for traffic patterns and, you know, non-motorized trails and so forth. So it's not crazy to want to take a pause on this and say, are there implications of what may be changing there in the coming weeks that would affect this project? In any case, I have, I do see a hand up, so at this point, I'm going to ask if anyone, first in the audience, wishes to comment.
If that hand up is the applicant?
You're absolutely right, sorry. I want to give the opportunity to the applicant or the applicant's agent to comment first as we open public comment, and I do see one hand up on Zoom, that's Mike Novak. Are you the applicant or the applicant's agent?
Hi.
Hi, Ms.
Yes, I am a resident, I live at 1210 School Road, and I've lived here since 1989, and...
Okay, go ahead. So you're not the applicant yourself, is that clear?
No, I am not. I'm a resident that is tired of the unkept areas between...
Go ahead, you can have three minutes, then.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm just tired because you can barely walk down the sidewalks on both sides of the north and the south side of School Road, all the way to the roundabout, and a handicapped person certainly could not use a wheelchair. But the property has not been kept up. Not only that, but also the traffic coming up School Road has increased immensely since all these new subdivisions have come in. And I think that before this new subdivision, Phase Two or Phase Three, whatever it is, gets approved, I think McKinleyville Avenue needs to be completed all the way through so that so many, so much traffic does not continue to come up School Road to Washington to use it as the way to get around from coming down Central Avenue. And the BMX park is going, going to increase the, you know, the new MCSD BMX park is going to increase traffic considerably.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And one, one other thing, also, the medians that are put, were put in originally in, in 2009 or 2010, when, when the telephone poles were there in the middle of School Road, they, we were told that they would be removed once the telephone poles were gone and power was underground, and they are still there, and we don't, we can't turn safely into our properties from either side, you know. And they're pointless, that, nobody maintains them, they're, sometimes they're an obstruction to, when you're trying to turn left from, coming from Central Avenue to our homes, and you can't see the incoming traffic. It's a danger, and there's going to be accidents happen. We'd like to get a turned, turned lane in the middle of the road like it should have been done from the beginning.
Okay, thank you. I do just want to make certain that neither the applicant nor the agent of that, of this project is in the room and wishing to comment, since they would normally have the right to go first. I don't see any sign that anybody's out there. They may not have expected this to be a discussion item, but given that it is, I will now invite anyone who is in the room and wishes to comment on this item, which is the Santos subdivision in McKinleyville, the extension, I should say, for a larger subdivision. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Supervisor Madrum?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, haven't been here for a long time. It's good to see you all. Yeah, you know, sticking to the subject matter at hand, right, because that's the way it's supposed to work, is this is the agenda item, is the extension of the map. I, too, have never seen conditions added after a project approval had occurred. Now, that doesn't mean that productive conversations couldn't happen with the Santos family, who have inherited this because Mr. Santos passed away, bless his heart. And so the, the family, you know, is trying to keep this project alive for housing, you know, which we desperately need. But again, I found the folks I'm talking to there to be very interested in considering the public's needs. So again, I think a productive conversation could possibly happen, that they might end up agreeing to some additional conditions or changes. It depends. The market has a lot to do with this stuff happening or not happening, and when we add a lot of new conditions, it can make it even less possible to build, but it may be there's some trade-offs, and I don't know, I'm just saying I found them to be cooperative. In mowing the field once a year, I think it probably needs to be mowed twice a year because of the fire hazard, and the vegetation encroaches on the existing sidewalks along that right-of-way, which make existing transportation systems difficult to manage. So there is that, and as far as the medians, yeah, we, the county, need to do a better job of actually mowing the medians. That's our responsibility, not the Santos. So there are some plans. Back in the 80s, there was a McKinleyville Trail Plan that was done. Now, that's quite outdated, that's 40-some years ago. But the McKinleyville Community Plan was updated in 2001, and there's a lot of information in there about trails and connectivity and the rest. In addition, something that is incredibly relevant, and, you know, just hot off the press, is last year, the community, working with the MICMAC and a subcommittee, along with some grant funds from Caltrans, I believe it was, working with RCIA, completed a multimodal study for Southern McKinleyville to figure out how to connect McKinleyville with Arcata safely for multimodal pedestrians, bicycles, et cetera. And that plan covers the areas around School Road that we're talking about here, and it covers those areas at Hiller Road, as well as Central Avenue, and Azalea, and North Bank. It's a great plan, and it's fresh, and it's real. And I, you know, we need to get that to you guys, and make sure you're aware of it, perhaps in your next discussion, that could go out from the Planning Department to you all, so you could kind of look at that. Jerome, I appreciate the things that you're bringing up, you know, very important issues about connectivity and safety and such. And the last thing I'll say is, the only way right now that McKinleyville Avenue is ever going to get connected to the roundabout at School Road is if this subdivision gets built, because it is a condition of the subdivision, to build that extension and all the things that go along with that. So there's a lot of positives about hopefully extending this and getting this built someday, housing, connectivity, all these things. And again, I will just say, I think opening a conversation with the owners would be the way to try and proceed with other thoughts or ideas. But take a look at the multimodal plan and see what that might help inform. Appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think, I see no other hands, so I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to us to try to figure out efficiently how to dispose of this item. I mean, as I see it, we, we, let me ask one question of Director Ford. I think, I think we all, or at least many of us, appreciate these issues that Commissioner Curiase raises. As you see it, Director Ford, given the discretion that will be had in either, on the, on the part of the Planning and Building Department generally, for the implementation of this project, should the, you know, once the extension, once the permit is extended and, and when we get to the point of building or planning the building, will there be further opportunities to engage this subject with the owners if we just approve this now, as is based on the past conditions? Will that close the door to these, to these issues being added as conditions later?
For public improvements, yes. I'm not sure that we have the ability to add those conditions right now, anyway. That's why I just really want to go take a look at it.
Yes.
Evaluate whether or not things have changed, whether there's policies that would warrant this. If there are, happily bring that back to you, but if there's not, we'll come back and explain why.
Okay. Okay.
So you, I guess I'm gonna ask a direct question, because I'm, I read B in the, what the recommended action finds that the development has not changed from that for which the permit was granted, and the findings made for approval of the major subdivision can still be made. So I, are we, is there, I didn't see any staff presentation that that has been changed, so I would be comfortable moving forward tonight with that.
I think we feel comfortable moving forward with the, the project as it is. I don't think we're prepared to give you good answers about what can be done in terms of public improvements, and whether or not those are conditions that can be added to an extension.
Okay. So I, I hear you there. So I'm just gonna go here, adopt a resolution attachment one, which says the following: Finds that the Humboldt County Planning Commission adopted a mitigated negative declaration, SCH number 2008012016. On September 1st, 2011, the Planning Commission approved an addendum to the MND and modification of the project. Further environmental review is not required as no changes to the previously approved projects are proposed, and finds that the development has not changed from that for which the permit was granted, and the findings made for approval of the major subdivision can still be made, and C approves the extension, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, attachment one A, which has all these attachments. And that would be my motion.
Okay, we do have a motion from Commissioner Mulder to approve the staff recommendation that we extend the project as previously submitted.
I'll just comment and say that, based on Director Ford's feedback, that it would only be a continuation to one hearing. And based on the feedback from Commissioner Levy's, Levy's question about, is there another chance to advocate for public improvements, and the answer being no, I feel like a two, two-week extension to September 4th, given the gravitas of the potential improvements and the tie-in to the town plan is warranted. And, and that's not saying that county staff will come back on the 4th and say, we can't do this, we can't add anything, in which case the permit would be approved as is.
I'm not hearing a second.
It's fine with me. I'm one of five.
Yeah, motion fails for lack of a second to approve it now as recommended. Prove the extension.
So I'd like to move to continue the Santos subdivision extension to a date that's determined by staff.
Can we say September 4th to September 4th? Okay, so Commissioner Kuriazzi moves to extend this extension to the next meeting, September 4th.
I'll second it, but I'll make the caveat that this cannot be further continued after the September 4th meeting, just so that we don't delay the development further.
Certainly. Yes, I mean, assuming that there is anything to propose, we would wanna make sure that the applicant is prepared for that. But in any case, yes, you, you seconded the motion to continue this to the next meeting. Any further discussion on that motion?
I, I support what you're wanting to do, but also in the same breath, I can't support the motion because I did not see any evidence under B that changed the conditions, so.
Okay, if, yes, you wish to comment further?
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable resting on the, that the findings made for approval of the major subdivision can still be made. I'm comfortable pushing back on that part of B.
All right. If there's no further comment on the motion, then let's take a roll call vote on the motion to continue the subdivision extension to the next meeting. The Santos subdivision extension.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuriazzi?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
No.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes four to one. Thanks very much. And with that, we come to the end of the items pulled from consent, and that leaves just the workshop. I would suggest, if all involved don't disagree, that perhaps we don't take a break just yet and allow the, the staff, which is in this case Director Ford, to make the presentation on this workshop for the benefit of all of us, commission, and the, those of the community who've come out. And then we'll probably take a quick break, and we'll go to public comment following the presentation.
Thank you, Charlie Levy. Good evening.
Evening, commissioners. Sorry, didn't have the mic on. I am here to make a presentation on the development of the town center plan. And this is really a workshop to allow the Planning Commission to become familiar with it, ask questions, have a little bit of dialogue with not only the staff, but the public. So what we intend to do tonight is to provide some of the policy direction that comes out of the McKinleyville Community Plan, and then talk about the process for the town center ordinance. I do want to emphasize that I am not going to go through a play-by-play of six years of work. I, I mean, this, this has been a very involved process. Then wanna talk a little bit about the town center ordinance itself, and I'll walk you through that. And then talk a little bit about the DEIR and what the DEIR found and the subject matter in terms of the comments on the DEIR, and then turn it over to you to either have questions asked, allow public comment, or, or whatever the chair chooses. So I, I just really want to familiarize the commission with where this is. Obviously, the area within the orange lines there are the town center area as identified in the McKinleyville Community Plan. You can see that at the very eastern edge of the property, that's the location of Pearson Park. Within that area is the teen center and community center. There is Azalea Hall, basically right under where it says Pickett Road. There's the library in there, and then there's also the sheriff's substation. Across the street from that, on Pickett, is the Eureka Natural Foods, and also the club, which is a gym.
Are all the computer volumes turned down? Because that sort of seems like a computer feeding back on itself. No? Okay, great. Thank you.
So right in the middle of, of the site, basically, you see the, where it says City Center, that's the location of the shopping center, the existing shopping center. I'm only pointing out existing things right now. You can see that Central Avenue, and this will be a big part of the discussion, it has been a big part of the discussion, really divides the town center from a, of east from west kinda standpoint. And that was something that, as I'll point out in a moment, that even the community plan was concerned about. So looking into the policy guidance, there's a couple of different sections on policy. First is the establishment of the community plan, which I'm kinda outlining here. And then there are, is the requirements for design guidelines, or developmental design guidelines. So I, I think it's important to really see what the goal is. It, it is clearly to establish a unique identity for McKinleyville. And the original drafters of the plan wanted it to be a viable place, wanted it to be a community focal point, where there would be social and community interaction. Wanted to see an area of mixed land uses, within encouraging bicycle and pedestrian travel, but not to the extent of not making it safe for automobiles to have access. So then when we start looking at some of the policies, it identifies that it should be mixed use, mixed-use zoning, or mixed-use categories of zoning, including higher-density urban housing, which should be in concert with retail, commercial uses, and shop fronts. There should be an abundance and variety of open spaces. The plan doesn't wanna see drive-through restaurants or big-box stores. The public facilities that are there, it's interesting that it made these comments, that should be retained and shouldn't be converted into non-compatible commercial uses. And then it also identified, and this is what I was referring to before, that there should be alternatives developed for Central Avenue, and how to get across that, because that is a four-lane road that is actually the busiest road, I believe busiest county road, in the county of Humboldt. So then it gets into design standard goals. So the goals are to have safe, accessible, and human-scale residential and commercial areas where all, people of all ages can work and play, and promote preservation and development of pedestrian-oriented neighborhoods and commercial areas. I hope you're starting to see an emphasis that's embedded within the goals and policies related to pedestrian orientation and also for bicycles. The policies relate to design standards, shall be formed, a design review committee shall be formed to develop the design standards. And it puts a rather interesting comment in there that requires some interpretation, but it says it doesn't wanna see any special permit required for design review. And then the design review should establish clear development standards, and that intersections, oops, that's not on me.
Yeah, interestingly, it's, it's looking normal on the computer.
Okay. So the intersections and streets should be designed to facilitate pedestrian movement, bicycle connections to commercial areas, and transit stops. Those are, the, these are pulling out the key concepts within these policies. The, the full text of the policies are included in the staff report. So this, the McKinleyville Community Plan was adopted in 2002. Work was not started on this ordinance development by at least the county. There are some people, and there are some people here in the room, that started thinking about it before 2019, but the county really began in earnest in 2019. And started with having public sessions, this is, there's more detail in the staff report on this too, where really the first two meetings were intended to gather public input. What's important to you? What do you wanna see? And that, the first meeting was really devoted to that, where we just had people sitting and giving input, and that was being written down on a big boards or, or paper pads. And then the second meeting that we had really allowed people to sit around tables and develop some concerns and ideas that they wanted to see. And then there was a survey conducted in 2020 that is attached to the, the staff report. That's an attachment as well. The, one of the struggles was how to formalize a public process. And there was some discussion about how to do that, whether a separate group should be formed, or whether the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee was the appropriate group. And since the purpose of the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee is to collect information and make recommendations, it seemed like this fit directly into their charter in terms of hearing from the public, taking input from the community, synthesizing that into a recommendation, which is what they've been working on for the last six years. So during the ordinance development, there were some big discussions around, I'm just gonna name probably the, the discussions that took more time. One certainly was wetlands. It took a lot of the early discussion timeframe. Part of the struggle there was it was really unknown how the wetlands would inform what could be done in terms of developing a town center. There was concern that the requirement in the McKinleyville Community Plan to use a one-parameter wetland could interfere with the ability to have an integrated town center. Should I explain the definition issue with respect to wetlands? I don't, I don't wanna be redundant.
I think a brief explanation of it would be valuable.
So most agencies, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Regional Water Quality Control Board, use what's called a three-parameter definition of a wetland. It requires that there be water. It requires that there be plants that are reliant upon water, and that it requires that there be soil that has been changed in its context due to the fact that it's saturated most of the time, and then the plant material in it is beginning to change the nature of the soil. So that's a three-parameter wetland. The Coastal Commission in the coastal zone has typically used a one-parameter wetland, which would define a wetland as any one of those three. And one of the things that we see particularly along the coast is there's a lot of types of plants that will do well in a foggy environment and are identified as wetland plants, and, and so those become single-parameter wetlands. I was gonna talk about this later, but I'll talk about it now. There, there, it ended up being .64 acres of single-parameter wetlands on, on the site. So it, it wasn't a huge concern, and so there is a, actually, the, the MICMAC hasn't landed on what they're gonna recommend on this yet. But they have been struggling with the possibility of going back to a three-parameter wetland for the, the town center. And there's about 5.6 acres of three-parameter wetland. And, and so the definition of the wetland is part of the ongoing discussion, is part of the recommendation. This would result in a need to modify the community plan to allow a definition change of wetlands within the town center.
Quick, could you repeat the number of acres of one-parameter wetland, please?
.64.
So. And, and just, because I wanna make sure we're all clear on that. But you said that there's 5.6 acres of three-parameter wetland.
Correct.
So, I mean, if, so we're talking about there's only .64 acre of wetland that wouldn't be captured by either one, that would, the three parameter is the more, it, it would, it would need to hit all three of those requirements to be three-parameter wetland, and, and most of the wetlands actually do that. Only a small portion are only one-parameter wetland.
That is correct.
Just wanna make sure that's clear. Thank you.
So the, the MICMAC really struggled with this, and received a lot of input on this. There is a divided opinion within some in the community that really think that, you know, the wetlands should be just preserved in place. The MICMAC held a field trip to go out and walk the, primarily the site behind the shopping center, and walked through that, saw what wetlands looked like. That was attended by a biologist that was representing the property owner, but it also included a representative from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, who went out and identified what they were seeing and what they thought were important. And, and so I think that was a very beneficial kind of, of eye-opening experience for everybody, because it started to see that some of the wetlands out there maybe weren't in the best condition. Some were, but many weren't in great condition because largely that area is used for grazing. And so out of that came the idea that the western portion of that shopping center property could be set aside, and I'll go into more detail with, when we get to the ordinance, but for recreation and preservation of wetlands. And so 14 acres of approximately 45-acre area is proposed to be set aside for wetland restoration and/or wetland preservation. restoration and/or wetland preservation. The other thing that you saw was really well-developed in the policy guidance from the McKinleyville Community Plan is what the ordinance calls connectivity. And really, the connectivity issue here is related to pedestrian and bicyclists. There are no new roads proposed other than extending nurseryway from where it deadens right now up to Hiller Road. And when you see the map, you will see that the MICMAC really put an emphasis on trying to do that. Part of that discussion also relates to what's going on on Central Avenue. There's not quite as much controversy with Hiller in terms of having well-defined bicycle trails along those roads. The next big topic was really trying to figure out how to capture this in a document that could live on its own. And part of the struggle was really trying to see and visualize what it looked like because it's hard to think three-dimensionally when you're looking at black and white. And so the MICMAC really went through a lot of iterations of what should the zoning look like, what should the document look like, how should it be formatted, how to develop that. What they finally came to was really zoning the entire property to mixed use and then developing a Q-zone, which allows completely separate standards to be used instead of the normal Q or mixed-use zone standards. So the Q-zone will really be the zoning that's more specific and applies to this area. And I'll go into that more in a bit. Then, as I mentioned, the public and the MICMAC had trouble visualizing how to see this developing. We were able to bring on a very well-respected architect to help us do that, Cash Bouja, and he actually developed some models, some massing models that could be looked at. And the, out of that really came and solidified the idea of using a form-based code. And so the design standards really are centered around a form-based code, and I'll go into that a little bit. And then the other one that just, it's one of those that I think if everybody could run away from, they would, and that's the road design. And the big issue there really is Central Avenue because the commission or the community is very much split on this. I mean, some people absolutely want to maintain Central in its current configuration or something very close to it, while others see it as an opportunity to create a place, slow traffic down, create enhanced bicycle pedestrian walkways, and I'll show you what that would look like in a little bit. But there really isn't a lot of meeting in the middle on that. So it'll be interesting to see on the 27th, when the MICMAC undertakes this again, where this lands and where the recommendation comes from. So the thing that the MICMAC did in going through all this is they got to a place where there was a draft of the town center plan, and that was accepted as the project description for preparation of the DEIR. It was never intended, that would be something that's written in stone, never to be changed, but it was something that allowed an EIR to be prepared and to evaluate the project. And so we have completed the draft EIR. We've completed the circulation of that. We've received comments on that. I'll go through those towards the end of the presentation. But the MICMAC is now looking at meeting on August 27th, 2025, which is just next week, to look and make, they've got three critical decisions, more critical decisions to be made, and then to review and make a recommendation on the final EIR. And once that's done, that will complete the formal MICMAC recommendation on this. So as I mentioned, the zoning of the town center would be mixed use. It would be modified by a Q-zone, and it, the intent right now is to modify the community plan due to the definition of wetlands, but that may be something that the MICMAC chooses to not pursue because that is one of the decisions that's still on their agenda.
Commissioner Kiriyazi.
Thank you. Just to interrupt, can you repeat again what the last steps are remaining for MICMAC?
They need to, they're going to meet on the 27th to review the final undecided items within the actual ordinance itself. One of those is Central Avenue, one of those is the definition of wetlands. And right now, I'm not remembering the third.
I think the third is that if they want to change the definition of wetlands, they have to also change it in the community plan?
That, well, yes.
Or related to the wetland issue, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and then they will make a recommendation on whether or not, well, presumably make a recommendation on the town center ordinance and hopefully on the planning commission and then board of supervisors certifying or adopting the final EIR. So I just also want to bring up that one of the things that evolved during the discussion on the town center was that a project came up called Life Plan Humboldt. It's 219 units, as I recall, to be developed along the south side of Hiller. And so there were actually some nuanced adjustments made in the ordinance to make sure that A, multifamily, or B, senior housing could be allowed without having to fit within the form-based code. And so those are there, but the area shown in purple is the current property configuration of Life Plan Humboldt. So right now, what I need to do is to get out of this and go into the ordinance. I will happily answer any questions, or we can take a break, or I will go to the ordinance.
I think I'd rather not take a break just yet, but if commissioners have questions right now for Director Ford on what we've already heard.
I have a question. Who pays for, or where's the funding going to come for all of these improvements to the roads and trails? And they're not going to fall on the property owners, are they?
They're going to be part of the development cost, yep.
So if someone comes in and says, I want to build senior housing within this zoned area, they would have to contribute towards these shared costs?
Yes.
I think we're ready for you to proceed to looking at the ordinance then.
I am having trouble finding it and working on it. I thought I was so prepared and had this all queued up, and no, it's not here.
Well, it's nice to see that Director Ford is occasionally fallible. If you do need me to take a break now, we could, but
I'm 15 seconds
You're close, got it, sounds good.
So the picture that I'm about to show, that I put onto the cover for this particular iteration, comes from the event when Dan Burden came and did the walkthrough and did the analysis of the walkability of the town center area. So that was one of the interesting public engagement things that we did was for the public to be able to come and participate and hear them from here. So this draft was really prepared for the planning commission for this workshop. It does reflect some of the changes the MICMAC made at their last meeting. So it is as up-to-date as it can be. So it has a bit of a purpose statement, and then it talks about the zoning classifications. And then the thing that I want to just stop here for a moment and focus on this, is that readable?
Yeah, and possibly you could make it just a little bit more closer to full screen.
Is that better? So what this really does is says, okay, we've got the Q-zone, and you're going to see on a map in just a moment that there's going to be an area zoned R3, or identified as R3, that's still within the Q-zone, but it's now pointing to the R3 section of the zoning ordinance. So the R3 standards there will apply. The same thing with the public facility urban standards, those will apply. And then you're going to also see an area that's designated for streamside management and wetland areas, and the requirements of that provision within the code will apply. But then the rest of it that is shown on this map, that is basically zoned as MU, the rest of this ordinance that we're about to walk through will apply to that area. Any questions on that? I know that's confused some people in the past. So then, moving on down. We come to the mixed-use provision, and there are the uses that are permitted. One of the things that you're going to see here, and originally they were broken down into more discreet uses, the MICMAC asked at their last meeting that it just be residential use types and non-residential use types. So that has been changed in this particular table. You can see that some uses, most uses are just permitted outright. There are some uses that are permitted with a special permit. And
To clarify, this is different than what was originally provided in the packet, the staff handout, at least what I have.
If it is, I apologize. I thought I'd made the change before I made the attachment to the staff report, but none of the uses have changed.
Just how they're grouped?
Just how they're grouped. Because there were residential, civic, and I believe, commercial uses previously, and this is now just residential and non-residential. You can see there, maybe you recall that we talked about no big-box stores, no drive-throughs, those are in the notes there, and it's just some other limitations that are placed on that. One of the interesting things is that number four, they're all called to your attention, the parcel surrounded by railroad, the wetland parcel and north of Hiller, which is the area behind the existing shopping center, can have up to 25% of that devoted to just multifamily without it being mixed use.
Commissioner Michael McFarlane, yes.
So obviously, mixed use looks like the most comprehensive for future development, most inclusive, so I'm just wondering why that section that was zoned R3, would it not make more sense to also make that mixed use for future changes that could happen or could not?
I think part of the struggle with that is that that's currently a trailer park, and in all honesty, we didn't know what to do with that. I mean, it could be changed to MU.
I guess that would be my comment would be if trailer parks are covered under MU, then change the R3 to MU's that way in the future if the trailer park was to ever change or be built.
I think one of the things that, I'm trying to think back four years now, but I think one of the things we're concerned about is putting a mobile home park as a permitted use. So then we get into the mixed-use standards. These are fairly common types of zoning standards, allow very small lots, and the reason for that is so that, you know, if somebody wanted to develop narrow storefronts, that would be acceptable, and they'd be able to do that and then own the stores. Typically, it's looking to have buildings built at the front yard setback and really using up the entire lot. One of the changes from the C2 zone, which was the predominant zone back there currently, is maximum building height of four stories. Currently, the C2 zone allows up to 75 feet in heights, which would typically be more than four stories.
Yes.
On, when these building standards mention a block including a residential zone, can you clarify what a block is? Is that a street block?
Yes.
And would that include, for example, the side, the north side along railroad? Would that, would the residences across the street be considered included?
So help me understand where you're looking.
In, under building standards, a part, in that table, the building standard section, the minimum setbacks for front yard and side yard mention exceptions when they abut a residential zone or a block including a residential zone.
So one of the things you're about to see is that there are deviations depending on the street type and what can happen along streets. And railroad is a different street from what the primary mixed-use core would be, and I'll point that out here in a minute.
So that is, that ties to those definitions that vary by street type?
Right.
The residential block or the residential zone?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And it's also a bit of a residual, going back to looking at perhaps doing very small lotting patterns and block patterns within there, but as this evolved, we really took out internal circulation for automobiles, and I'll show you that in a little bit. So we get into building form standards, and this talks now about street types. And street types dictate the kind of front-end improvements you can have on the buildings. This, you can see, this is too big for me to have the definitions and the street types in it at the same time, but the green obviously is a more residential street type. This burnt orange color, I guess it is, is the more intensive kind of block pattern, and the blue is kind of an intermediary, and this is shown in the key down here. So then we get into the table that really identifies, you know, how buildings can develop, what is allowed within the buildings. And I'm going to have to reduce this a little bit, I apologize, because it's important to be able to see the three columns on the right, which identify what's allowed within the different street types and the different kind of frontage and fenestration improvements that can be put in there.
Can you reduce it slightly more? Because it is cutting off the, a little bit of the left and right edge there. Thanks.
Yeah.
At least for this part.
Yeah, so it's kind of hard to read. I apologize for that. But it talks about the different design elements that can be put onto these different street types. I need to clean this up a little bit because some of them aren't, don't end up on the same pages. But like in this particular case, this is allowing the building to extend out over the property line, over the sidewalk. That dash line you see on the lower left is where the right-of-way line would be. So it identifies the build-two line, which is that line that exists along the right-of-way, it's zero feet. The sidelines, zero feet, except in that area, which was the green, that's 20 feet there. So one of the, oops, sorry. This is really just more setbacks and allowing certain improvements to be shown and approved, including balconies.
Can you elaborate on that title? I wasn't quite visualizing what the maximum feet were referenced, or referred to. I couldn't quite picture it.
Where are you looking?
This entire, the frontage criteria table here, what you have shown, so you have eight feet maximum, six feet maximum, four feet.
That's encroachment is the right-of-way.
Okay.
And that's encroachment over?
Basically, over the sidewalk.
Okay, yeah.
Basically, canopies or awnings or balconies?
Yep.
That are above, yeah, somewhat elevated.
Yep. I mean, I recognize that this is all new stuff and it isn't really something that probably gets dealt with a lot by the planning commission. But this is fairly creative in terms of creating a place that has a uniqueness to it. And that was part of the goal of the county, the community plan in calling for the town center.
Can I ask a question here? And I do just want to, even though we're letting Director Ford get through this without too many interruptions, if people do have questions on the commission, please ask. I'm curious what level, if this level of detail or how much of this detail was developed by the MICMAC in its own process versus county staff basically taking the vision, the goals, public input and so forth, that they were curating and fleshing it out at this level of detail?
A lot of this we proposed, county staff proposed. Some of it came out of the work with cash.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So basically, kind of more setbacks and building articulation there. I'm trying not to read everything, I apologize.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, this is a 27-page document.
This was provided in our staff, our staff report, too.
It was, but Commissioner Curie, I hadn't noticed it. We're looking at one that says July 30th to 25, 2025 at the corner of every page. Yours says August 21st. So there obviously was some revision.
Yeah, I apologize. I don't know how the wrong one got attached.
Yeah. I'm not seeing a whole lot of new content or dramatic changes.
No.
It may just be some formatting mainly.
The only change that will have been made are two things. Number one is the uses that are permitted that we've already gone through. And when we get down here, you're going to only have two alternatives for the central street section. I put the third back in.
Ah, I see. Got it. Yes.
On this view, you have the very top, that's a continuation of the building height articulation checklist. I'm curious if that last sentence, the step-back top floor, is an "and" condition or an "or" condition to the previous one? So the previous one is it must have one, at least two, I think, of those, I know, at least one of those three bullets. And then you have another sentence. And I'm curious if that last sentence is an "and" condition.
Right. This was to something that the MICMAC actually spent quite a bit of time on not wanting to see monotonous. That should be another bullet.
Okay, so those are four separate bullets?
Yeah.
Any one of which could qualify there. Okay.
So, you know, there's attention given to not wanting to see blank wall spaces, being concerned about what the transparency looked like on the buildings. So then we come out of that and come into the connectivity, talk about the thoroughfares to Central and Hiller, talk about local streets, Nurser Road being the only real street that's being extended, and that'll be extended through the Life Plan Humboldt site. There will be other improvements. But then there is a separate map that we're coming up to that's going to show the bicycle linkages. And then one of the things that is kind of unique here is to have some kind of transit facility developed. That could be a multi-modal facility where even different kinds of buses could come. You could have express buses and then local commuter buses. You could have a bus or commuter bus that runs back and forth between the airport and this site. You could have bicycle walkers. So it could be a place that really does enhance the ability to be in this place and travel to and from this place using alternative transportation. And that really is the source. So one of the things that was very important to the MICMAC was having the pedestrian connections through the site. The north-south here is very important. That was kind of brought up earlier. This is the Midtown Trail. So there is a trail up on the north side, on the north side of railroad. There is an existing trail that goes, that is actually, the connection is on the south side of Life Plan Humboldt. But this is showing a connection through there. And then the desire is to see that there is a trail that connects the very western and very eastern sectors of the town center. Just as in, kind of an irony, the, those connections on the east-west begin and end in either open space or parks. And so I think that there's been a lot of thought given to that. You know, it's not an explicit requirement, but it certainly is there to be understood, is that those pedestrian connections really form the backbone of transportation within the site. And so ideally, what that does is establishes the development pattern around these pedestrian connections.
Can you elaborate in what you mean by not a requirement?
We have, it's really hard with zoning to dictate how somebody's going to design their buildings. So there's clear guidance here. And, but we've stopped well short of designing the facility. This is not a project, this is zoning. And that was one of the struggles, I think, for the public early on, too, is like, everybody wanted to make this a project where we laid out where each of the public spaces are, where everything happened, where the vendor spaces are going to be. And at the zoning level, you just don't get to do that.
I guess just noting that it, the ordinance does say that bicycle pedestrian connections are to be constructed as part of subdivision improvements and the site improvements associated with development shall be completed prior to 25% of the currently undeveloped portion is developed. And so I guess I'm curious how, so it'll be on the early developers to finalize what that network looks like?
Yeah, so trying to envision how things develop and then being responsible to allow flexibility within that. One of two things is going to happen. Somebody's going to come in and start developing things without doing a map. And so it's like, okay, if you start doing that, at some point, you've got to figure out where these connections are going to be. More likely, there will be a map and the site will be subdivided. And that's really the best time, the most convenient time to identify, here's where all the connections are going to be made, here's what the requirements are. And really, to be able to put those on the individual properties or on, and some developers would even see the value of doing that as part of the initial development because that obviously adds value to the property to begin with. And so that's why we try to not be overbearing, but be reasonable in terms of, this really needs to happen early. You don't get to develop the whole site and say, oh, we forgot. Not that anybody involved in this would do that. So then we come to everybody's favorite conversation, which is Central Avenue. So I do, in the final EIR, there is a modified exhibit here that shows the middle portion of this being a turn lane, which is what was described, I think, in the EIR. And that really is kind of a compromise that people were concerned about a lane reduction and how that would affect two really important things, which is the ability to maintain infrastructure that's in the street and closing off lanes. And two, since we do have a fire station right there, that they need to be able to get in and out. And if there's only two lanes of traffic, how do they get through? So the center lane really becomes that mechanism. But you can see this exhibit really tries to address the desire to have good pedestrian connectivity, good bicycle connectivity on both sides of the street with landscaping separating them and addressing the lane reduction. The intent of the lane reduction is twofold. One is to give more of the street amenity for bicycles and pedestrians and landscaping. It is also to allow this to become really a sense of place, a statement of place. It also slows down traffic. And that allows pedestrians to better get back and forth across Central from Pearson Park to whatever will develop here on the west side of Central Avenue. And so that was the representative image that was used. Supervisor Madron mentioned the multi-modal study that was done. One of the recommendations, and I think this was their primary recommendation, was to keep four lanes of traffic and a free center turn lane to expand the bike trail, keep sidewalks on both sides, but on the west side to really expand, expand that bike pedestrian path to 10 feet. And so this is really an attempt, an attempt to address the public's concern that is concerned about losing the number of lanes.
So when you're talking about reducing lanes, is it only?
Can you lean forward so you can?
Is it only through the town site?
It's only through the town center.
Not the whole Central?
It's not the whole Central Avenue.
So you would go from here to here, then back, and then back to two lanes again?
And one of the things that the MICMAC did do, many of them, is did research on their own, and there's plenty of planning studies on this, that when you slow traffic down on a street, the volume of retail activity goes up. So not many really successful town center areas have a four-lane arterial running through it because people aren't looking to stop there. But if they're going there, then it becomes more of a destination. They stop, they get out, they spend time there, and they spend money there. And there are plenty of books written on that. There's lots of studies on that. And so I thought that was an important component that the MICMAC, that was part of the argument for those in favor of what has become known as the road diet. The other-
Quick question.
Sure. Quick question, but we're, yeah, that's, yes, sure.
Just to clarify off of your response to Commissioner O'Neil, that it looks, at least, these are labeled as Bella Vista Avenue to Railroad. That's well south.
I took it out of this, I got spanked for that by the MICMAC, too. I took it out of the study without eliminating those references.
So this is just Hiller to Railroad, essentially, roughly?
Hartwood.
Hartwood, okay.
Because it starts out as two, then it goes to four, then it'll go back to two, and then back to four, and then back to two as you're going down?
It's, it's two north of Railroad. And so then it gets to, then it turns into four, basically, at the shopping center? Or just before the shopping center?
All the way down beyond the southern boundary of this planning area, basically at the U-Haul, that whole, that's where it merges back down into two lanes.
Correct.
Yes. But that's actually further south than where we're talking about.
Right. And so here's another example that was done as part of that study. Forgive me for the Bella Vista Avenue to Railroad. That is just a reference coming out of the previous study that was done. But this would be a cross-section with three lanes, keeping a substantial amount of pavement there. And, but it's intended to slow down traffic, to provide good separation from traffic and bicyclists. But it's just something else to kind of consider. And again, the MICMAC really hasn't landed on this yet.
Was consideration ever given to extending the road diet from kind of all the way after the Mountain Mikes, U-Haul, shopping center, all the way through past Railroad until we go down to one lane again anyway?
Not, not really. Primarily because we're trying to keep the discussion to within the town center. And so, no, consideration was not given to that.
I have one more question. This is related to the question I asked earlier about how it gets funded. Obviously, this is not going to all happen at once because you don't have one person-
Obviously, this is not going to all happen at once because you don't have one person developing the whole thing. It's going to happen as people get financing for different portions of it. So how are you going to make these road improvements? You're not going to make the first developer do all of the road work. So are you going to bank money and make those someday in the future?
So actually, there's language in there relative to Central that the development, any development along Central isn't required to pay for these improvements. That's really got to be grant-funded, that's got to be something that's done differently. So, all of that on Central really has to be something that is done, maybe by the community finding grants.
So it could be that that wouldn't even happen right away, the Central changes?
I, I, until there is grant money to be able to do improvements like that, yeah. And it's probably even, given the magnitude of the changes, it's probably something that would happen in a phased manner because there's very few grants that would pay for all of that at once.
First, you need a plan, and that costs money, and you'd need to do all the studies and all of that. And so it's very possible that these reduction or road diet that you call it may not even happen for several years. I mean, even if you said each developer had to contribute towards that cost, it could be years before you get enough to do it.
You know, you, you just brought up a really, really important point. This isn't a plan for next week. This is a plan for the, the future. I mean-
Twenty years it could be.
Twenty to forty years out, yeah. So it, it's really, there will be development more immediately.
I mean, I've, I've developed a lot of projects, and I know if you don't have all the money right away, it's-
Yeah. But I, I, I think that it's important to just recognize that where are we leaving the next generation, maybe two generations, to have a vision and start building towards that? And, and what does that look like? And it's actually interesting to hear from some of the younger people that have gotten involved in this process and what they see as being good versus people who have been around for a while. And, and so I, I, I find that fascinating.
Well, it's just that you don't want to get too hung up on something that may not even happen for past my lifetime. I don't know, it's, it's what you would like to see happen, and hopefully it'll happen, but it may not.
Well, but you, this is a bit of a dialogue, I'm sorry, Chair, but if I-
All right.
But you said it best yourself, if you don't have a plan to start with, you, you don't have anything to begin to get money to even develop improvement plans for. And, and so this puts something out there that then you can start to attract grant funding to start to work towards.
Right, and that works, it works. You get a conceptual plan, next thing you know, you've got the funding. But if you don't have that, you don't get anywhere.
Peggy, Peggy, I think people can't hear what you're saying, so can you maybe pull the mic a little closer? And, yeah, thank you.
It's one of my problems I have. Yeah, you have a, you have to have a conceptual plan, and once you have that plan, then the funding seems to come, you know? But without it, you're not going to get anywhere.
Moving on. So the next cross-section we see is for Hiller Avenue. And this is a little bit conceptual, too. One of the things that you probably can't read the notes in there is that center area does include turn medians, and there may be some roundabouts that get put in to accommodate cross-traffic. And, but basically, this will be a two-lane road with generous area for landscaping, pedestrians, and bicyclists. So then the next thing we're going to move into-
Commissioner Curie Azzi, quick question.
And Hiller is not separately funded, it's not, it's not spelled out the same way, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So then we start to look at the landscaping through the thoroughfares, and, and that's stuff that I, I won't read each one of those, but trying to create a, a sense of, of place through the landscaping that's there. Here's some design review standards by which things will be evaluated and what the requirements are for review. If somebody wants to deviate from the Q-zone, they need to get a conditional use permit. One of the things that I think that you'll want to pay a little bit of attention here, and I will pause to talk about parking, is in the mixed-use areas, there is no parking requirement onsite. If there's a desire for parking, it needs to be in a common shared facility. Residential parking has a maximum number of parking spaces, one space for each residential unit. With common off-street guest parking may be provided. There's obviously provisions for bicycle parking in the commercial zones and in the residential zones, parking, lot design, and landscaping requirements, providing site landscaping. Then we get into what can be done in public open spaces, and this is one that I, I will stop at, too, because the requirement here is that a-
Yes.
Quick question, so, so the screen said no minimum parking in the MU designated areas, but then you said if there was parking, it would have to be in a shared area. So I interpret no minimum as the developer could propose parking in front of their thing, and that would be allowed because it's not-
Not on their site.
Okay, so it's-
It's got to be like a shared parking lot, shared parking structure, but we're, the, the, there's not going to be a sea of parking in front of a building.
Okay, so it's, okay. It's no minimum, actually, no, no parking?
No onsite parking.
Okay. It was just the no minimum part that was confusing me.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So, then this was also a pretty good topic of discussion for the MCMAC. The parking was, too, by the way. The, uh, providing some open space to have some space for people to gather. And what was the final compromise was that a minimum 3% of the developable but undeveloped area of the town center shall be devoted to open space with a minimum of 20,000 square feet of that being in one location. Obviously, when the development comes in early, we want to see how that's going to be accommodated because that should be well thought out and placed in, in a location that is conducive to what we're trying to accomplish, which is a place where people to come and gather and be.
So just a quick question about that. We have the question of the wetlands at the west end, and you've got that, and depending on the definition that's used, that might, we could say six acres of that is wetlands, or something like that. If it's moved, it would have to be, the mitigation would require a 1.5 to 1 ratio, so that would grow. So, that, not maybe not all of the 14 acres, but assuming that this proposed 14-acre wetland area zoning held, that would set aside not all, but a good chunk of that as wetlands, open space, but perhaps accessible open space?
Intended to be accessible open space, that's why the pedestrian connections are shown through there. So that it really turns from being something where cattle are grazing with a barbed wire fence around it right now
Right.
to being a place where people can walk out, look at the flowers, look at, at the native species that are now-
Yeah, I mean, just because I think that's, that's an important consideration, like 3%, doesn't sound that much. But then again, if you, if you consider that some sort of a wetland habitat, open space, recreational space is going to exist over there, I mean, it's not, it's not a big long, it's not Pearson Park, but it is going to be a park of sorts, which however this plays out, it sounds like.
And, and it's important to recognize that Pearson Park is in the town center.
Well, yes.
And, and just for comparison, Pearson Park's around seven acres.
Right.
So the open space is 14.
Right, yeah. Pearson Park is not being considered developable, though, is it?
No.
No, it's, it's a park.
It's a park, yeah.
Right, 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 we've already got that, no, no, I, I understand, thank you.
So then this was really worked on before we were working on the ordinance that the board approved yesterday. I'll talk about that under reports from planner, but have requirements here for, for lighting. And then other design standards, trash, enclosures, rooftop mechanical equipment, odors, dust, smoke, vibration. Then we get into something that's frankly really unusual in an ordinance for development.
Thank you, um, just a quick, quick question. So I, I was curious if there was discussion around including in those, in the previous section in section five, including a review of street design. So there's a review of all sorts of other parameters, but none with respect to streets that may be developed by developers.
Well, the only streets that we're anticipating are Central, Hiller, Railroad, McKinleyville, the extension of Nursery Way.
Yes, and then I think there's a couple of other interior to it.
There's the only Nursery Way that would go up and go around the back of Safeway.
Yep. Yeah, so was there discussion about, in terms of when there's modifications being done, a review of what those proposed modifications are? So for example, my, the, I know that the, the images included here are simply conceptual, but if they're, I'm assuming they're going to influence proposals by developers, and seeing 13-foot wide lanes down Hiller, those are very large lanes, and also we're proposing that pedestrians cross a length of 80 feet to get from one side to the other. So I'm just curious if-
Nursery is going to be a much narrower street. Hiller's intended to be a narrower street than Central is right now. The struggle really is where is the community going to land in terms of what it does with Central? That's the, those are the considerations that have been made. I don't think we looked at the design of Nursery, in fact, I know we did, going up around the back of Safeway.
Director Ford, I just want to ask, because I'm mindful of, of wanting to leave time for the public to be involved in this, and I would ask the commissioners to, to consider that, but how much more of your presentation, I know we started late-
I'm almost done with this, and then I don't, I can hold off on the EIR and give you that during the public hearing.
I, I think that probably makes sense to hold off on the EIR because I fear that could take up too much of the remaining time. I also want to be mindful that we're about halfway through the total meeting length, and we haven't had a break yet, so that's why I'm asking if you're just a few minutes from that point, and we can get to that point and take a break, I'm okay with that?
I'll be done in three minutes.
Sounds great, thank you.
So the, the, the final one that's kind of really unusual for any kind of a land use ordinance, where you're talking about permitted uses, is what you're going to do to preserve and protect wetlands. And so this identifies what the intent is, it identifies what has, in fact, sorry for the highlighting, that really is a holdover for the decision point for the MCMAC. So this is still a working draft, but you can see that before issuance of any permits or granting of any entitlements on the property within the town center, a wetland delineation shall be completed, delineated all three parameter. Wetlands, that may or may not get changed. So, you know, before anything's done, we're going to start addressing the, the wetland issue right up front. It's not going to be something that gets held off to the end. And then before issuance of any construction permits or subdivision approval, there needs to be a mitigation plan developed.
And for the mitigation plan, can the developers use any of those 14 acres in the sense of a bank, or?
Yes, that's what's intended.
Okay.
There may be some that they want to retain onsite. I know that Life Plan Humboldt is really looking at retaining and enhancing and expanding the wetland resource they have on their site and using that as their own amenity.
So are you going to have individual developers propose their project and then complete the mitigation kind of like piecemeal in the 14 acres, or are you going to formally create a bank and sell the credits to the developers?
Um, we are not taking responsibility for that. It's creating the provision for the property owner or owners to be able to work together to, to do exactly that. But the, the county is not going to be involved. The county's going to approve the plans, the county's going to review the plans, and make sure that whatever mitigation is required gets done, gets done. But beyond that, we're, we're not, we're not operating a mitigation bank.
So who's the ultimate owner of the 14 acres of wetlands at the end of the day?
So what this requires to be done is that it be put into either a conservation easement or be given to a land trust or something like that, so that there is a long-term maintenance provision in it.
So in theory, could a land trust be granted that 14 acres now and decide to finance a bank on their own to sell to future developers?
Well, it needs to be done for development of this site.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But yes.
A bank with assigned credits to this site, it's, okay.
So, um, just getting in, you mentioned already, Chair Levy, the 1.5 to 1 ratio can be modified based upon the value of, and the enhancement value of, of the mitigation plan, but it still can't be less than 1 to 1. Requires a grading plan, stormwater should not drain directly into a retained or recreated wetland. So, a lot of this, there's success monitoring criteria, long-term ownership, that's where you got into there, consulting with CDFW. We did include in there, there is a kind of a drainage along McKinleyville Avenue. If they wanted to regrade that and move that out away from McKinleyville, create more of a riparian corridor, that they would be given credit for that within that 14 acres. And then we also identified preservation of important trees. There's the Spruce Grove out there that you can see that kind of goes right down the middle. That's really the dividing line between the 14 acres and the other area, and then there's a, a redwood clump.
So is, is replacement 1 to 1?
On the spruce trees?
Yeah.
Yes.
And is there success criteria to see if they, if the replacement survive, or no?
Uh, did, did not include that, but that's something that probably should be added.
Okay, thanks.
And then we have a planting list of approved plants that can be used in the town center. And now I am done.
Thank you so much, Director Ford.
Sorry I took so long.
No, no, I, you, you, we asked a lot of questions, we didn't start right at the beginning, you, you, I, no complaint there. I do want to ask, before we go to a break, I see quite a lot of people in the room. I'd like to get a show of hands of approximately how many of you actually wish to comment? Okay, so that's most, but not all, simply because we normally allow three minutes to comment. I'd really like to do that, I'm just want to make sure that we don't get to 9:30 and not have a chance to even hear from all of you, or have a little bit of chance to digest and process what we've heard. So, but with that being said, I think now we should take a brief break. Can we be back at 7:55? That's six minutes. Six or seven minutes, we'll, we'll come back.
Next week.
I'm Wesley Chesbrough, and I am a relative newcomer to this planning process in McKinleyville, although I've been in McKinleyville since I came home from Sacramento representing you, which has been some years now. And I, first of all, just want to give all my praise and support to the hard work that the McMac has done. I think they've done a good job. There's a lot of different opinions in the community, obviously, and trying to meld those together and come up with the best plan is a big challenge, and they deserve support and respect for that. I'm supportive of the maximum amount of traffic calming possible on Central for a variety of reasons: to slow people down, to help local businesses, to help people get across the street. My wife is disabled and operates on a scooter, and I know the difference between a safe way to get across the street and a dangerous way with cars rushing at you. And I think the more we are able to get pedestrian traffic in downtown McKinleyville, the better. I'm for the higher densities that have been proposed in order to make McKinleyville a more complete community and provide badly needed housing. So, thank you for taking the time to consider this, and I look forward to it being adopted and implemented.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Scott Binder. I am Director of McKinleyville Community Services District. I am also a committee member on the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee. I'm probably one of the rare ones that is a McKinleyville native. I remember what is proposed to be the Town Center back when it was McKinleyville Shopping Center in its glory days of the 60s and the 70s. It was truly a Town Center back then, and I support. The Town Center Plan pretty much is written so that we can try to reclaim that. I recall as a child enjoying Safeway, and across from Safeway, right in the middle of the parking lot, there was a big grassy area, and it had a great big gazebo. And families would come, and we'd have picnics out on that. The Little League ball field was just to the northwest of Safeway. In the field behind Safeway, we'd have Pony Express Days. There'd be a pit barbecue. There'd be dances. There'd be families. It truly was a Town Center. And I'd love to see it be restored to a 21st century semblance of that. The only thing that I have to say is in regard to the road diet. That's an extremely divisive issue. There are people who are organized that very much support the road diet. There's also a large contingent of people in our community who aren't as organized. They believe in representative government, and they tell me, or I learn indirectly, that they're not in support of taking four lanes or two lanes in each direction down to one lane in each direction. So, I have to recommend alternative one as being the proper choice to assure compromise and fairness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Laura, you got a picture for me?
Yeah, I'm Ann Lindsay. I'm a resident of McKinleyville and president of Life Plan Humboldt, and we're developing Humboldt Commons. And there you'll see, we're going to be the first development in the McKinleyville Town Center. And I'm 73 years old, and I can't wait too long. So, please move it along. You know, I gotta get out of my home. It's too big and can't keep care of it. And I've been working as a volunteer for almost full time for five years because seniors in our community need an alternative where we can age independently but stay connected to others and get help as needed. And while we're-- I was a family doctor here in community for 28 years, and I saw firsthand what happens when people, you know, can't go home because they have too many stairs, or they can't drive anymore and they're isolated. So, we're creating a community where people can walk around McKinleyville, and it's got a great Town Center, and really stay connected. And people who's here supporting Life Plan Humboldt, see, we've got a great group of people. It's truly a grassroots effort. We've logged 9,600 hours reported by volunteers in the last 32 months, and we have raised $3.2 million locally. North Edge has created a loan fund of $6.7 million so we can draw down for our pre-financed expenses on our $60 million project. And we thank the Humboldt Headwaters Fund, Humboldt Area Foundation, REDEC, North Edge, and Community Visions. I just want to say that we're poised to begin our final plans for construction. The EIR was supposed to be done in March. We're bleeding money all the time, and we really hope-- our budget is tight, and we've been struggling to keep this affordable for mid-income seniors. So, we hope you can pass this along, and the Board of Supervisors will pass this along as well, and we can get to our work. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Colin Fisk. I'm with CRTP. CRTP has been engaged with the Town Center Planning Process for a long time. In fact, I think I've attended almost all of the McMac meetings over the last six years on the Town Center. And in that time, I've observed and participated in really detailed and painstaking discussions about what should be in the ordinance. I've seen the McMac members struggling with a lot of issues ranging from the design of Central Avenue to building height, density, parks and green space, wetlands, the proper mixture of uses, all sorts of topics. There are 17,000 people, more or less, in McKinleyville, a lot more people who work and visit and play and go to school there. So, of course, you're never going to get everyone to agree on a lot of these things. But that said, over those six years, I've seen what I think is a pretty clear convergence of opinion among the folks that have been participating in this process, which is a lot, in favor of more or less the way the ordinance has turned out, which is, you know, for denser, more walkable housing, public and commercial space mixed in with design standards that create a pedestrian and bike-friendly environment, and with major changes to Hiller and Central Avenue to improve safety and create a more welcoming pedestrian environment, including, I believe, a reduction in the number of lanes on Central. Those are all things that CRTP supports, and I think I've seen a really broad support for that among the broader community as well. Of course, there are things we would change if we wrote the ordinance ourselves, you know, but on the whole, with the ordinance and the accompanying street design changes, including that lane reduction and the bike and pedestrian upgrades, we think it's a really huge win for the community, and we're excited to move them forward as quickly as possible after all these years of work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Judy Hodgson. I live in Fieldbrook, but I am possibly a future resident of the Humboldt Commons, so I've been volunteering for the last three years. I was a reporter in this community for about 35 years. I was also the editor and primary county reporter for the Arcata Union throughout the entire 80s. And believe me, I spent a lot of time at the McKinleyville Services District meetings all those years because that's what we did in those days. When Central Avenue went through its last big rehab and they took out those cypress trees, there was a small vocal group of people who said, "Let's design around those trees. We do not need a five-lane freeway through the center of McKinleyville." Those people were shouted down, and they lost. And so, now we have this five-lane thing that goes through the center of what should be and was, apparently, from the old timer here that said that it used to be a Town Center, right? You know? And this is what they're trying to bring back. I haven't been paying a lot of attention yet to all these redesigns and stuff, but I was so excited when I started going to one or two of the McMac committees, all the young people who were involved, people who are open for new designs and the benefits of slowing traffic. I'm totally in favor of the diet, road diet. I like that term, and we need to be able to cross that road. So, there were two things I didn't-- as a reporter, I never thought I would see in my lifetime, and that's the removal of the Klamath dams. And the second one is for McKinleyville to get its heart back. So, I hope to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Pat Caspari. I'm a resident of McKinleyville. I'm also the General Manager of McKinleyville Community Services District and a member of the McKinleyville Municipal Advisory Committee. I have been authorized by the Board of Directors of McKinleyville Community Services District to speak on behalf of the district in support of the proposed Town Center Ordinance. The Humboldt County Planning Department staff, and particularly Director Ford, have accomplished an exceptional task in working with the McMac and the community of McKinleyville to prepare an extremely well-crafted Town Center Ordinance. The Town Center Ordinance will not only benefit and guide the development of McKinleyville's Town Center to turn it into a destination spot, but will be an asset for all of Humboldt County with improved housing, community, and business facilities. The ordinance facilitates the installation of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure that will make Hiller and Central Avenue much safer for the community. It facilitates additional and extended trail networks in McKinleyville. It directs the improvement of very degraded wetlands to make them a source of improved habitat for wildlife and the public. It facilitates homes and workspaces in the urban center versus prompting urban sprawl that will impact undeveloped areas throughout the county. It facilitates areas for a transportation hub, for farmers' markets, craft fairs, outdoor music, outdoor cafes, festivals, et cetera, et cetera. The ordinance benefits not only McKinleyville but the entire county, obviously through the much-needed addition of spaces for affordable housing, but also through developments such as the proposed Life Plan Humboldt Development, which will provide a much-needed senior living center that will benefit all residents of Humboldt County. The McMac and the Planning Department have spent six years, conducted over 40 public meetings, and held several workshops focused on the Town Center to solicit public input on the ordinance. It was probably the most focused and extensive public process that I've ever been a part of in my 40 years of working in the public sector. So, thank you very much, and I hope you consider adoption of it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Kelly Garrett. I'm a retired environmental planner and a McKinleyville resident. Your responsibility tonight is to ensure that any ordinance you recommend is consistent with the general plan. In McKinleyville, that means the McKinleyville Community Plan 2. The McKinleyville Community Plan is clear. Section 3422 Wetland Policy 15 prohibits degrading or impacting wetlands on newly-created parcels. Yet, the Town Center Ordinance anticipates subdividing the parcel behind Safeway while pre-authorizing six acres of wetland fill. That is a direct conflict with the McKinleyville General Plan. A zoning amendment in conflict with the general plan cannot lawfully be recommended. This process has been marked by democratic failings. The McMac has denied community requests for meaningful discussion, limiting public input on the project to three-minute comments. The county officials have dismissed and maligned community members rather than answer questions. And the ordinance itself would erase future oversight by making all Town Center projects ministerial approvals. No hearings, no discretionary review, no SEQA at the project level. Even the county's own DEIR concedes two significant impacts that are unavoidable: increased traffic noise and air emissions. Under SEQA, this requires consideration of feasible alternatives, but we don't see that. There is, however, such an alternative available: Community-Based Alternative 3. It honors Ann Pearson's original vision for the Safeway parcel. It complies with Wetland Policy 15 and the general plan. It avoids unnecessary wetland fill and would substantially lessen or eliminate traffic noise and air emission impacts. SEQA requires that it be analyzed, and the community plan requires you to uphold that path. McKinleyville deserves real planning, planning that complies with the community plan, protects wetlands, and ensures safe streets for our children and represents democratic participation. I urge you do not advance the project as written, uphold Wetland Policy 15, and require analysis of Community Alternative 3 as the feasible, lawful, and community-driven option.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you for your letter. Yes.
Yes, my name is Bonnie McGregor. I'm a resident of McKinleyville, and I'm one of the people who was working on developing the ordinance five years before it even came. We had to push to get it taken up by the McMac. And the McMac and the Planning Department has done an incredible job to move it forward, and here we are. There is one thing that we haven't discussed that was not brought up tonight. In fact, it was voted on without letting a lot of us know it was going to be a vote at the last McMac meeting, and it's about density. And you've heard tonight, people talk about the desire to have that sense of place where we can gather, and that sense of community can happen in the center of town. And so, density becomes really critical. How do you develop the Town Center so that it's viable? And how do you make it so it's also a welcoming place for the 17,000 of us who already live here? Some of us have gotten a lot grayer in working on this, but it doesn't mean that we don't have an understanding of what community is. And if you overbuild the very heart and center of McKinleyville, then you stop that kind of welcoming in. It becomes somebody else's place of living, and the Pearson Park, which is a place where all of us gather, will be somebody-- the backyard of the people who live there. So, that's a critical issue. I have 29 seconds. I want to give you a sense of the maximum, mind you, in the EIR. So, please take a look at this density. It is 106 acres, which is .17 square miles, and they want to allow-- oh, where's the figure? 25 units per acre. Oh, please let me say this. That's 2,650 units, 2,650 units, at 2.31 people per household. That's 6,122 new people living in the center of McKinleyville. So, that's like all the people of Blue Lake, Willow Creek, Trinidad, Manila, Garberville, and Redway coming in and living in blocks of buildings in the center of town.
I need to ask you to wrap it up.
So, please, strike a balance.
Yes.
You know better than anyone else how to do that. Thank you very much for letting me finish.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ira Blatt. I've been a resident of Arcata for the past 25 years and of Humboldt County for the past 53 years. I'm 79. We need a residentially-- a resident-led facility such as Humboldt Commons, which is the campus name for Life Plan Humboldt community in Humboldt County. My wife and I have traveled out of the area and have seen how resident-led senior facilities can and do work. We look forward to joining a community of active, adventuresome seniors who are friends and will become closer friends as close neighbors. Life Plan Humboldt has fostered such a group through their friend-raising and fundraising activities. Life Plan communities promote social connections. To often seniors living alone become isolated. The only people that they have contact with are their care providers. My wife and I helped care for her mother for a short time, because she didn't live very long after she became ill, but for her father for three years. Luckily, we were able to do that. We don't have a wealth of relatives that live in the community, unlike they do. In the future, when my wife and I need help coordinating and navigating the medical care system, we want to be at Humboldt Commons so that Life Plan Humboldt can fill that need as well for us. As far as the density, it's projected that Life Plan Humboldt will have approximately 200 at most facilities, that's less than 300 people, at most.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Penneykamp. I'm assisting Ann Pearson. Ann wishes she could be here tonight, but she can't. She wants to congratulate everyone who's been working on this for years and years and years and knows that eventually what comes out of it's going to be good and important. I think the only thing to add to that is hoping that people are cognizant of the timeframes that Life Plan Humboldt is working under, and that zoning happens in a way that doesn't interfere with this, which is really the first step of the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Emma Haskett. I'm the Project Manager for Life Plan Humboldt. I'm also their token millennial. I was also born and raised in McKinleyville, and I own a home here, or in McKinleyville. The Town Center Ordinance encourages sustainable transportation, responsible infill, and it supports the county's Climate Action Plan goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled. Humboldt Commons is a great fit for the Town Center. Our seniors will be good neighbors, and because they drive less, they'll add less to traffic. And with so many services within walking distance, having a dense population living there will reduce car use even more. We're also investing in the community by building a bike path and sidewalk along over 1,300 feet of Hiller Road, extending all the way to Central Avenue. That will not only benefit our residents, but everyone in McKinleyville who walks or bikes along Hiller. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. George Williamson, Life Plan Humboldt Board Member. Happy to be here tonight. And you've heard a lot about our proposed community, but the thing-- one of the attractions is McKinleyville Town Center. And as Director Ford has told you, there's a vision. There's planning, a lot of planning that has gone into that. And we want to be a catalyst to really see the rest of the Town Center develop consistent with the design guidelines. We're investing-- we're proposing to invest significant funds, but we want to see more funds come in. We want to see that our investment in that community is inspirational and that attracts others to all the other parts of the McKinleyville Town Center, because we think that in a whole-- as a whole, it could really be a very special place. Thank you.
Thank you. And before-- we have a couple more people lined up. First of all, reminder that anyone else in the room who does wish to speak, I would ask you to come up now. And when we complete the in-person public comment, we do have some people on the Zoom. I would ask those Zoom participants, if you wish to comment, raise your hand now so that I know how many of you are wishing to comment. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Megan Blumenstein. I am the Co-Executive Director at Seagull Farm Stand and Folk School on Hiller Road. I'm also a member of the committee, the McMac Committee for Active Transportation, and I am the mother of three children who I have raised in McKinleyville and live on the west side of McKinleyville Avenue. So, I have a lot of experience as a parent and a pedestrian with children. I just wanted to express my support for the Town Center Plan and also traffic slowing measures that are proposed in the Town Center Plan. And also, as somebody who runs a business on Hiller Road, there's a lot that I think-- that I see needs to be done to kind of slow traffic and also provide more opportunities for young families in McKinleyville, add a little bit of color, a little pizzazz, a little bit more opportunities for the community to engage. So, I just wanted to express my support for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Langkella. I have been a resident of McKinleyville since, like, '69, and then I moved to Fieldbrook. So, I have raised my kids in McKinleyville. I grew up in McKinleyville. I raised my kids in McKinleyville. I raised them in Fieldbrook. We've gone to McKinleyville schools. I have four grandchildren that go there now. My boys live there. I work in McKinleyville. I'm a Realtor, and I'm also a business owner in Arcata. So, I drive Central Avenue a lot, and I have throughout my life. I've been there when it's two lanes with those open dishes on the side. And what we have now, we were so excited for. It was improvement. Traffic moves, right? I'm not against doing something. I just don't think we need to get rid of all our lanes. And I don't like the proposal of the three lanes. We have a fire station right there. Madrone said at one of our meetings was like, "Well, you know, there's a back entrance. They can come around back and come out on Central." Yeah, right. Okay? So, they come out around back. There's a red light. There's two cars backed up. Where are those cars supposed to go? You know? We have school buses that are on a schedule that drive that. As I sit in my car, since I've been going to the M Mac meetings, I visualize what it will be, you know? Because I've been in those communities that they've reduced the lanes, you know, Santa Rosa, Yucaya, you know? And it's frustrating to drive those areas. And I just hate for our center to be like that. I don't want to be frustrated driving those roads. The density in the Town Center, I'm not for it. I don't-- it's just way too many people. McKinleyville will lose our community. So, my recommendation is the proposed five lanes, but just shrink them down a little bit.
Thank you.
I finally had the gumption to come up. My name is Evelyn Doyle, and I am a transplant to this area of Humboldt, beautiful as it is. I come from Chicago. I've been a nurse for almost 50 years, and I worked in home health in Chicago. And there were places that were dumps that people died in because there was no air conditioning. It was 104 degrees. But I also got to see some places that this envisions, where elders are together and they are able to have social interactions, that people are looking out for each other, that there are places where they have gardens, where they have places where they can share with each other and have that socialization. That is so important for our elders. We've shown through COVID what happens when there's not that socialization and how it increases the risk of cancer, but also the risk of Alzheimer's and how people die so much sooner. I am so thankful that I can be part of this vision, because that's what it is. It's a vision for our futures. And I'm hoping we don't have to worry, wait another 20, 40 years, because I don't think I'll be here, although my mom's 93. So, it's a possibility. So, I pray that we look at this and get it rolling, because we have people who are waiting. And I tell my children and grandchildren about this, and they're like, "You're going in a nursing home?" I'm like, "This is absolutely not that." So, I had them at one of our gatherings recently, and they were like, "Wow, this is really amazing." I'm like, "Yes, it is." So, I pray that you all get with it and get on it, and let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for this very thoughtful and also nicely condensed public comment. Is there anyone else in the room who wished to speak? Before I go to Zoom, we now only have one hand up on Zoom. But if not, thank you for making such thoughtful comments. I will now go to Zoom. Alex, you have two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, but could you speak up a little louder?
Yes, I can.
Great.
My name's Alex Simmons, and I'm a McKinleyville resident and a homeowner. I'm 33 years old. I am generally supportive of the Town Center Plan. I think it's a great idea. It'll help bring the community together. I agree that density is important for this, not only for housing, but just being able to be able to include, you know, all the types of facilities and draws that are proposed. I am generally in support of the lane reduction, road diet as proposed. I think it's a good compromise to do it just between in the Town Center area and not have it be like throughout the entire Central Ave, even though that could be a good thing. I am in support of narrowing lanes throughout Central Ave. I think that right now, like, the two-way left-turn lanes is too wide, and it could provide better value, like, to widen bike lanes or provide buffer area. So, I think that could be-- should be included, kind of like the 11-foot-wide lane plan that was shown for one of the slides. And I think where possible, having-- when there is buffer area for bicycles, I think having raised buffer area, like, curb buffer area with potentially a vegetate area is preferred, especially for cyclists. Just having that physical separation is pretty valuable for cyclists. And then, I don't know if it's part of the plan, but if parking is an issue, I suggest like a parking garage, just use vertical space instead of, you know, horizontal space. like a parking garage, just use vertical space instead of, you know, horizontal space, just to kind of concentrate parking if, if that is, is a desire. And, yeah, and then specifically to McKinleville Ave, that was discussed earlier.
If you could just wrap it up in a few more seconds, I'm afraid.
Yeah, just, I would suggest combining the sidewalk and bike lanes into one facility on McKinleville Ave, to more efficiently use space if that is needed and spaces is constrained. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last chance for anyone else on Zoom or phone to raise your hand. But seeing none, I will close the public comment. Thank you all again, and thank you for keeping your comments such that we had a little bit of time to, to respond to them and to hear staff's response. So I guess before we just bring it to the Commission for Further Discussion or Questions of Staff, I wanted to ask if staff has any comments that you wanted to make in response to anything you heard, whether questions or otherwise.
Sure. So one of the first questions that were asked, thank you Chair, was about the 25-foot burden area. That is not ubiquitous along all parcels, and I believe it's already been relinquished along the shopping center frontage. I'm really looking for the questions.
The wetland question about whether it violates the ordinance?
Yeah. It does not violate the ordinance. I will come back and explain to you how Policy 14 and 15 are orchestrated. And it's, it's interesting that parcel, or Policy 14 says that you can basically impact wetlands, provided there's no net loss for existing parcels. There's only one parcel that's been even partially reconfigured since the adoption of the plan. The area behind the shopping center has not changed in the, the time since the plan was adopted. And, and so that 15 would not apply to that. And I think I put this in the staff report, but there is disagreement on how 15 should be understood. Is that an absolute prohibition of, in terms of being able to impact wetland areas and, and then mitigate for them, fill and mitigate, requiring that there's no loss in value? Talked to previous staff that worked here at the time when that was adopted. In fact, the planning, or the community development director was pretty adamant that was not what was intended there. It could be interpreted that that's intended to be once you develop a parcel or create a parcel for development purposes, that you can't touch the wetlands. I, I would argue right now that none of those scenarios actually really applied to this. The one parcel that has been modified is the southern parcel of Life Plan Humboldt, but that was never modified for purposes of development. It was modified for two reasons. There was a lot line adjustment with timber ridge to allow an expansion of timber ridge, and then there was a parcelization to allow what is now the Lays facility. But that parcel really was never parceled in order to allow development. It's still a large parcel.
The other one that I wondered about was the math on the increase in residents to 6,122. Is that math correct?
Approximately correct, yeah. I mean, part of the struggle here is that when we, when the MICMAC was looking at the, the design, decided what would be the appropriate design, and that source stories, as I mentioned earlier, that's really a reduction of what's allowed right now. So the form-based code is really what regulates there. During the initial MICMAC discussions, we didn't discuss how many people that would be. I think it was shocking for people to look at it from the perspective of the EIR. In the EIR, what we tried to do was be conservative and make sure that we didn't understate what the development could be, because the, what, the first primary objective of SEQA is to disclose. So we chose some fairly conservative numbers, which ended up being very big numbers. One of the things that you heard a gentleman speak to today, Life Plan Humboldt is not building out at that level. So what we did probably is we probably overstated what would happen there, but we did not understate what would happen there. So that whatever happens there, the analysis is adequate, and that really is the objective.
So when you look at the impacts, do you look at the impact beyond that townsite plan on the community of McKinleville? The schools, the transportation, urgent care, healthcare, all of those other law enforcement, fire? And are they all taken into the consideration? And also that we're trying to draw people from other areas of McKinleville in. So, you know, if I'm going to walk to the townsite, which I did the other day, you know, is it going to be safe to get there? Maybe safe once you get in that area, but I want to advocate for, as we add more and more housing to McKinleville, that we increase other services within McKinleville, that we don't just say, good, we took care of our housing, you know, needs by putting everybody in McKinleville, but now what about law enforcement? What about healthcare? What if Mad River gets shut down and, you know, we don't have urgent care? All these other impacts that, that could impact the community. And, and I know there was, Supervisor Madrone was looking at whether or not McKinleville was getting back their fair share of taxes based on what we pay as homeowners and residents in McKinleville. Do we get those services anywhere near those services back? And I just would advocate for the greater McKinleville, not, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for McKinleville, but there could be impacts that need to be mitigated outside of this area.
So we did look at those, and there's a lot to respond to there.
Yeah. But someday we have to look at it, because we live there.
Well, we did. But part of the, the benefit to the community, and it gets back to, this is something that MICMAC struggled with. What's a viable Town Center? Because one of the things that we want to see, and I'm saying we, because I live in McKinleville too, is that there is sufficient support to support retail, business, restaurant kind of uses. It's, it's like, part of the re, it always is interesting to me. I've been a planner for more, longer than I care to admit. And I've always seen people, we want a Trader Joe's, we want this, we want that. But I've talked to those folks. They look at traffic counts. And if you don't have the traffic count, or if you don't have the headcount, they ain't going to be there. And so part of the balance with the Town Center is that if you want to have, you know, a vibrant place that has restaurants and commercial shops and rest, I said restaurants already, sorry for repeating myself, but other kinds of businesses, you've also got to have the critical mass of the population there to support it.
And you're, you're talking about business, and I'm talking about more basic services, health, education, you know?
Well, but we did look at those. I mean, if you look at the EIR, the consultant absolutely talked to the school district, didn't get a good response, but absolutely talked to the school district, absolutely talked to the fire department, absolutely talked to the sheriff, absolutely talked to So yes, those, those things were looked at. This is not being done in a vacuum. Part of the commitment that was made, I made, to, to the MICMAC is that as part of the lane, road diet, lane narrowing, whatever it is, and since SEQA has changed, and now transportation impacts are evaluated based upon VMT, we also did a level service study. And, and that is in there as an appendix, so that, that there is disclosure. That's not environmental impact under SEQA, but there's full transparency there, that there will be some intersections that are impacted, absolutely.
And so it's one thing to say, yeah, there is impacts, but what are you going to do? Are we going to have more law enforcement in McKinleville? Are we going to have, you know, an increase in road maintenance? Who's going to maintain all of these, you know, bike trails and, and make sure they're safe? That's where I, I'm advocating for. I'm all for this plan and this ordinance, but I'd also like to see a bigger plan on how McKinleville gets more of their own tax monies back to provide for the, the increase in the community and the existing people that live in the community. Because we're taking care of a big problem that the, the county as a whole has to meet your housing plan, to provide affordable housing. These are great projects, you know, this project that we heard about tonight and the one that we heard about a couple meetings ago that's going to be for the disabled adults. These are, it's going to put McKinleville on the map, but we don't have help, you know, all the healthcare we need. And, you know, is that going to be allowed within the townsite if they wanted to put an urgent care facility there to serve the local community? Could that be an acceptable facility?
That could be, that's a permitted use for the Town Center. Absolutely. And, and again, it gets back to demand. And I, I mean, McKinleville is in the county. It is unincorporated. But for an unincorporated area, it has amazing services and resources. I, I just, I can't help but point that out. I mean, it does have a sheriff substation that is assigned deputies, you know, that are more than just one. There, there are a number of deputies. You and I live in McKinleville, we see the number of deputies that are...
Right, but now you're talking about increasing the population by another, a third.
But, but that's something that the sheriff's office addresses as part of their response to the population need. And yes, that is generated by tax revenue, but if this develops, that is a pretty good chunk of tax revenue. If this develops and there's retail going on there that is non-food stuff that's taxable, that's a pretty good chunk of income.
I understand that. I'm just understand, I'm just asking, is it coming back in the form of more improved roads, you know, maintenance of the facilities, and not just putting the burden on, you know, the community to go out and do all of this? That's my speech for tonight.
Other commissioners who are wishing to speak up now.
On, on the same vein, and I wanted to make this comment so the public was aware, but this evening, or 4:30, it's not really this evening, at the HCOG meeting, there was a presentation from the Housing and Community Development State Organization, and they went through the metrics and the calculation of what the projected housing need for Humboldt County is. It's kind of this, I can't remember the frequency that they do this, but...
Eight years.
Eight years, thank you. And it looks like, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but these HCOG meetings are recorded, so I encourage you to watch it. It was around a little over 5,000, and so I do just want to make that point, because we're looking at a density, a total, what was it, of over 6,000? So we would, in theory, and, and keeping in mind, this is just a plan, this isn't permanent development, so it could take years to see this, but Humb, if this was to get built tomorrow, McKinleville would be absorbing all of and more of the Humboldt County need for housing. So just a, I'm not, I'm not saying a conclusion here, it's a metric, it's food for thought and, and do what you want with it. The other suggestion, and I don't know if it's appropriate to make in this ordinance, but as a resident of McKinleville, one thing that I've seen is, and heard from a lot of people, is that there's a lot of vacant shop fronts, because it's just too expensive to rent and run a business. So I would encourage a consideration of a vacancy tax within the Town Center so that we don't have a ghost town. And then maybe those taxes could go towards what Commissioner O'Neil was saying, increasing the services such as fire and, and other community services. Thank you.
I, I do just want to speak up, though, about something that, because I've been doing this for a long time now, and you can have an EIR for a project where the, it is in fact analyzing what that project will do if it gets fully funded, if it gets fully built out, but you've already designed the project. Then, you know, you could talk about the number of units or da-da-da and the subdivision. What we're talking about here is the maximum possible build out if all conditions went in favor of these density rules and every developer chose to do that. We've already heard that the first project going forward under this plan would not build out at that density. It's not to say that none would, but I think it's really, what I'm reminded of is when we were talking about the EIR for the cannabis ordinance, you know? And, you know, you guys had to analyze how, if, if every eligible parcel that could do this, did this, how much cannabis would there be? And it was some appalling number, but it was never at all realistic that that would happen. And I'm not saying these are exactly analogous. This is a much more condensed area, not the whole county, but nevertheless, we just need to be mindful of the type of EIR that we're talking about here. I didn't mean to shut down anybody else's.
[laughter]
If I may ask one question, not sort of on my behalf and on behalf of all of us, you know, we have a little bit more time here, maybe a half an hour. Given where we are in this process, given that MICMAC is going to get together next week and maybe make a final decision, or, or maybe not, but, you know, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, the, the purpose of this, as I understood it, was in the first place to allow the public to comment on this, this draft ordinance or this, you know, this, this not final version of it, and to familiarize us with that and with what people think about it. But apart from us hearing and learning about it, are there particular issues that it would be helpful for you to hear, for staff to hear back from the Commission at this point?
Just anything that's of primary importance to you. I, I mean, I've been close to this for a long time, so I'm going to admit that right up front. I, I see this as being something that is generated by the community. I, I do echo, I really appreciate Colin Fisk having said this, and others have said it too, is the, the MICMAC is a very diverse group. They are, are, they do not all, as individuals, have the same mindsets, the same thoughts about things. And early on, those divisions really showed. But as the discussions have gone through, they've found a way to give and take. And so this is really becoming a product of community engagement. Not everybody's happy with it. I, I can't say that everybody thinks this is great, because you heard tonight that not everybody does. But I think for the most part, the, the feedback has been positive. And so I, I just, I think I wanted to say that because I think it's important to consider what the MICMAC has done in this. I'm, I'm not really looking to try to probe for changes. I guess if I am to reveal my, my thoughts on that, because I, I think the community is going to provide a recommendation to the Planning Commission. And, and so to a very great extent, I, I hope that that is received.
Yes, thank you, and well put. Commissioner Mulder.
So I just want to clarify, like, my understanding coming into this was, you know, we would wait for that decision or the recommendation to come to us before we start hashing out ideas and discuss the alternatives and stuff like that, because it'd be really unfair to all the six years of work that they've done to try to, you know, hash that out here before they've made that... before they've made that decision themselves. That's kind of how I walked into this meeting.
I would say that's fair.
Yeah. I guess Commissioner Kuriazzi.
Just because one of my favorite topics is roads. I'm curious what fire, particularly what fire's input is around a constraint on lane width, and curious about discussions that happened in the McMac. And part of this is coming from me just trying to put some of these, these spaces in context. So we're, you know, we're looking at 100 feet roughly between, you know, storefronts across Central and 80 feet across Hiller between houses and storefronts. And for context, I mean, that's, that's actually like having Highway 101 in terms of width, going through these communities. Granted, the speeds are not that, but in terms of how, just the distances and the separation that that creates, and keeping in mind I've heard support for this, I'm just sort of curious maybe if you could shed a little bit more background on the discussions of the width.
The discussions I've had directly with fire have not been as much about width as the need for access. They need obviously to have access to the road. They need to not be impeded in their ability to make a left turn into a site or onto a street, if that's necessary. So those were, those were their primary concerns. I think the thought of, on Central, because their concerns were slightly different than on Hiller. On Central, the free left-turn lane, if it's going to be a three-lane street, the free left-turn lane helps them visualize how they're going to be able to make those turning movements. On Hiller, adequate left-turn pockets into critical driveways and streets was, is, was critical for them. I think the other critical thing for them, this doesn't have to do with roads, but this is critical for them, is access to fire hydrants. If the hydrant is on the east side of Central, and they're in the southbound lane, they are going to have to go over and go across traffic to get to the hydrant. And so, those were things that they kind of asked for, is really be mindful of where hydrants get placed. And they don't want to run a hose across the street.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just throw, was there any discussion on increasing the amount of public space that isn't bike or road? It just, there is a fair amount of right-of-way there, and I was curious if there was discussion of making larger pedestrian areas that can activate the storefront.
There were enormous discussions around that. And part of it, you heard asked earlier relative to the burden area, and whether that's right-of-way or whether that's just area that is reserved, that just can't support structures. And, and so, there was a desire to maybe see all of that turned into spaces where vendors could come and have that unutilized part, or utilized for that purpose. Part of the struggle, though, is that, as I mentioned earlier, the burden area is not ubiquitous. There are some areas where it exists, some areas where it doesn't exist. So you're going to create a little bit of a dis, well, it's going, there's a fairness issue there. There is a question whether or not we should keep the burden area, whether that, or not this style of development with the, you know, storefronts and even the residential uses right against the street, whether or not we would want to keep the burden area or not. Because obviously, some of that area would, well, you could still put sidewalks in it, you can still put landscaping in it, but you really want to set back 25 feet. And one of the options that you saw used the whole right-of-way width, but put a lot of landscaping, a lot of pedestrian, a lot of bike path within there. And I have no idea where the McMac's going to land on that.
I just, per se, I appreciate having this workshop so we can brainstorm ideas that either the public or, you know, other McMac numbers can take to the McMac, because ideally, what comes to us, we won't be suggesting major modifications to, so it's great that we can work this out. So like my previous suggestion with the vacant, the vacancy tax, my other suggestions include the addition of a success criteria to the tree replanting, and then the consideration for, and this one might be a little more contentious and need a little more thought, but for the polit, for the areas that were potentially violating Policy 15 for wetland development, maybe consider a higher ratio there, a mitigation ratio, and that would kind of appease the two sides. And then the third comment is that, I'm not sure if this would be on the McMac or the county, but consider looking into a land transfer now to an agreeing party that would then work those 14 acres into an Army Corps-sponsored bank, just because that will significantly speed up any development in the area. If a builder can come in, buy the credits and be done, I mean, you're saving potentially years for each developer.
Understand. Not to argue, but it's really hard to do that in zoning.
To turn over the land?
To require certain things to be done as part of a zoning ordinance. That's law.
Oh, yeah. I was kind of saying as well for public feedback, if they want to, yeah.
Yeah.
But I understand how your hands are somewhat tied. Yeah.
Other thoughts, questions, comments?
No, I mean, I have a lot, I appreciate everyone's input, and I want to try to limit my discussion and avoid getting into topics of, you know, pre-making discussions that could lean someone one way or another, because that recommendation's got to come to us, and then we got to remember, our recommendation goes to Board of Supervisors, and it doesn't always get upheld. Sometimes it gets overturned or added or amended.
Certainly. No, I think that's, it's a really good reminder, and I think we all have great respect for the process that the community has been going through, is still going through, and will be going through to finish the plan, finish your recommendation. It's been really inspiring for me to learn about it, to get up to speed on it, so thanks for that. And I just wanted to say, too, that, you know, even as I'm wary of people getting too attached to like the number of like 6,000 new residents in any particular timeframe in this area, I totally agree with, and I think, you know, various members of the public have echoed, that we can't think of what's happening here at any stage of significant build-out without thinking about the impacts it's going to have on the surrounding parts of McKinleville. And the extent to which McKinleville is providing services to the rest of us, you know, I'm an Arcata resident, but I go up there a lot, you know? So I'm taking advantage of McKinley's services. So I think it's hard, because these things all fit together, but I think it was actually helpful to pull a more or less routine extension of, you know, of a major subdivision plan that's not within, but near this project, you know? And say, "Well, how do these fit together?" You know, and if one happens, what does that do to the, to the question of arterial capacity and things like that within the town center or next to it? So, I'm grateful that we've had this conversation. But with all that said, maybe if we're done and we're not deciding anything tonight, maybe we should wrap up the workshop. Any final comments from staff?
I just, on the 27th, maybe you could announce the time and place for it, maybe?
The time is 6 o'clock, and is it in?
Azalea Hall.
Azalea Hall? Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, thanks again for the great work that has been done by county staff on this ordinance, by the McMac, on the years of developing this plan, and of course, the community who, a good chunk of whom came out to sit through all this and let us hear from you, so thanks for that, too. With that item ends, that just brings us to basically the end of the meeting, but we have a couple more items here. The report from Planner. Director Ford?
Yeah, I just want to bring to the commission's attention that the Board of Supervisors approved the lighting ordinances on Tuesday. The coastal will go on now to the coastal commission. They also directed that we look at a street lighting ordinance and add that in. So we will be developing that, bringing that back to the planning commission as an amendment to this ordinance.
I was curious to ask about that, because they did approve it, but I sort of got a sense that, can you, can you explain what changes may have been made, apart from that recommendation on streetlights?
Yes, so, they made some changes under exemptions where it identifies, it identified that in order for the lights to qualify for the exemption, that they can't trespass on the other property. The provisions were added in that they can't trespass in the night, the night sky, they can't go up, and also that they can't trespass into either biologic, sensitive biological resources in the inland area or Escha, in the coastal area. And then, they took out the exemption for athletic fields and identified that lights for athletic fields require a conditional use permit. The provision for translucent screens over bulbs that have a maximum of 2,700 kelvins was removed from the coastal version.
Yeah, that, that's helpful. I mean, just, and does anybody else have questions? Since we did spend a while working on that one, I wanted to just hear how it went, so...
Good news on the fields. Did the holiday exemption remain?
The holiday exemption remained.
Yes!
I would just note, I read it was not a unanimous decision, though.
No, it was not.
One other thing they did was, the string lights have to be off at 10:00 PM.
Oh, that's it.
So the party's over at 10:00.
Okay. Candlelight only. Anything else under that item?
Not right now.
When you get, I noticed at the bottom, when you get to planning commission discussion items, we accidentally have September 3rd as our next meeting, when it's September 4th.
September 4th, thank you for pointing that out, yes.
Good catch.
Because I was like, wait, I have every, the 4th on my calendar, did we change something to move to Wednesday?
Yeah. So if Director Ford's done, are there any other discussion items or questions from I will just mention one. Thanks for catching the, the next date is the September 4th, Thursday, first Thursday of September. I just want to call out, though, because it's something I've been involved in in the past, I'm not formally involved anymore, but we got an email from Laura a couple weeks ago from the CCPCA, California County Planning Commissioners Association. In the past, both I and Melanie McHaver served on the board of that. It's a, it's a pretty good statewide organization. I learned a lot from meeting with those folks. And they are having their annual conference down in Tulare County, in the town of Tulare, which is, in case you're wondering, between Fresno and Bakersfield. So, it's on, it's on October 24th and 25th. They just asked me to, you know, make sure that everybody here knows about it. If you're able to go, it's a nice opportunity to get some training and meet some other county planning commissioners. And it's also very much open to anyone involved in that. You don't have to be a planning commissioner, planning staff, local planning commissioners, anyone who's a planning geek is welcome. Anything else, anyone else? If not, then let's adjourn the meeting at 9:11. Thanks so much, everybody, and see you on September 4th.
How's your uniform?
We have been getting...